All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started with the hearing tonight in public meeting. Welcome to you all. My name is Jim Ostrowski and I work in Eagles Environmental Support Division. I'll be the moderator for tonight. Right now it looks like we got about eighteen people logged in. I'm sure we'll have a couple more join us. So, welcome to our public hearing and submission H N Z G six five V D R C B W from applicant Brian Johnson as partial on Turkey Creek Trail in Indian River. So glad you could be here with us today. Just a couple of things in terms of our agenda for tonight. Like I said, I introduced myself, Jim Ostrowski, and I'm here presenting from East Lansing. Rest of our panelists I'll introduce in just a moment and they're from various places in Michigan as well. So we will start with a short information session after due introductions. We'll have the applicant come in and do a, we'll unmute the applicant's microphone and let him do a short summary of the project. After that, we'll take a few minutes for some questions and answers. It's pretty informal type of time at that point. Where if you have questions, you can pose them and we'll try our best to answer them. After that, what we're going to do is start the official hearing. So the way it happens is that we start out with just informal Q and A and presentation and then we start the hearing. When we start the hearing, you will know because I will tell you. And that's when you can submit your official comment for the record. Up until that point, it's just basic informal type of stuff. But at that point, you can do your official comment and we'll have Brian read off the the statement, the hearing statement and let you all know how to do that. And after that, after we take comment from everyone that wants to make comment, we'll close up the hearing. That's basically how it works. So then I'm going to have our panelists that are with me today go ahead and turn your cameras on. I'll have to introduce themselves. So Joe, I see you there. If you want to introduce yourself.
Sure. Yeah, I'm Joseph Haas. Please call me Joe. I'm the Gaylord District Supervisor with Environment, Great Lakes and Energy Water Resources Division. I supervise field staff in both the Cadillac and Gaylord Field Offices. I have, I think, nine direct reports, field staff and admin staff that report to me. We oversee statutes that cover Great Lakes, inland lakes and streams, wetlands, sand dunes, flood plains. And I'm sure there's a couple others that I'm missing, but you get the point. The main one I think we're talking about here is Part three oh one, the Inland Lakes and Streams Protection Act. And Brian Marshall is one of my direct reports and I'll hand it off to Brian.
Evening, everyone. Like Joe said, Brian Marshall covering the Sheboygan County and the project at hand, also covering Seago County and Preskill County for their northern districts overseeing the inland lakes and streams statutes, wetlands and Great Lakes.
All right. Thanks, Brian and Joe. So that's introductions. Now I'm going to allow Brian Johnson. He's the applicant. I'm going to find Brian here and unmute his microphone so that he can do a short presentation. Brian, are you there? You should be able to unmute yourself. I got you logged in twice, Brian, so I'm not sure which one is you. I want to meet you at both lines. So Brian, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, good, good. So at this point in the, in the meeting, we're going to give you some time to go ahead and do a quick summary of what you're proposing and I've got your slides here. So when you want to change slides, you just let me know and I'll go to the next slide, okay?
Yeah, definitely.
All right. So you can go ahead and you can go.
I'm not sure where you want me to start. We're, I'm a quarter interest owner of Lot L and the four of us are looking to put a boat well in so we could each have our individual dock space. It's an, it's an association lot. It's only for four people. I don't know if you got a slide of the drawing showing the layout. So there's the location.
Okay, it's location. You want me to go next slide?
Yeah. There's the location.
All right.
That's the survey.
Okay.
All right. So that's the, that's the general layout and aerial view of the lot we're working with. It's currently looks just like that. It's cleared. No stumps on it anymore. And you can go to the next one. So that's our plan right there to, to cut out thirty feet in and a hundred and sixty feet wide and have five docks across there for the four of us. The only reason the fifth one was proposed is for guests. If we have a friend that comes over that has a boat, at least there's another, another docking space. So I think some people misunderstood and thought we were renting a dock space out there, but it's strictly for us four owners. So you can go on to the next one.
That's all the slides I have.
Perfect. Yeah.
Okay.
That's it. And it's, any questions?
Okay, well, thanks. Thanks, Brian. Yeah, so that's pretty straightforward. I guess what we'll do now is we can open up for questions from our attendees. And like I said, looks like we got about twenty people logged in now for the meeting. So if you have a question about this project, and again, right now it's just open questions and answers. If you want to make an official comment on this for the record, you're going to wait until we open up the comment period. Right now it's just basic questions and answers. So if you have a question, you can go ahead and raise your hand by clicking the raise hand icon. If you want to submit it in writing, type your question into the question answer box. Looks like we do have one person on the phone calling in. If you're on the phone and you want to ask a question, you hit stop, if you hit star nine, hit star nine in your phone and that shows us your hand is raised. So you know, Brian, what's going to happen is that we'll, I'll read off the questions and I'll let Brian Marshall here at Eagle take them. And if he's got something he wants to defer to you, he will do that. So I'm going to go to the first question we have that's already come in here. It says, the Sheboygan County zoning ordinance for shared access has lot dimension requirements. What is the square feet area of those lots with frontage? Brian Marshall, do you want to?
Yeah, so I believe this is a two hundred and fifty foot wide lot. I'm not sure the exact depth on it. Brian, the other Brian, Brian Johnson wants to, if he knows the formal dimensions of that, if he could provide those, that would be great.
Yeah, it's about six thousand square foot the lot is.
Okay, thank you. Next question, has the applicant talked to Sheboygan County Planning and Zoning about the proposed project?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and that's Brian Johnson. Okay, so looking at my attendees here, looks we got a couple of people with their hands up. First one is Jennifer McKay. Jennifer McKay, I'm going to unmute you. So you can go ahead and answer your question.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. So my, my question is actually a threefold question. And so the first is, what was the legal mechanism in which four property owners came to own the two hundred and fifty feet of frontage collectively? Was it an easement, a covenant, common element in the condominium, the association development? The second part of that is what rights were specifically granted through that legal mechanism? Was it just to the common area? Was it water access dockage specifically? And then the third part of the question is, can the legal documentation be provided to Eagle and interested parties such as myself? And I should have introduced myself. I apologize. I'm the Policy Director at tip in the watershed council. And, and so myself and others in order to fully assess the proposed project.
Okay, thanks, Jennifer. I'm letting Brian Marshall, you'll take the ticket first. And if it's something out of scope of this meeting, then you let us know, okay?
Yeah, it's briefly out of the scope of the project. I do know we have had conversations with the local zoning and different things on this project. I'm just brief conversations overall. Not knowing the exact details of how or became entitled or got access to the lot or anything. Guess if, if it's open and willing, Brian's open to answer that further if you'd like. At this time, I guess.
Yeah, I can answer some of that. It was that common lot was created with the development of the other four parcels. That was the mechanism for four people to have a quarter interest in it. And then the, the lot is owned by Turkey Creek Land Development Association, which, which us four are the managing members of. I don't know if that helps.
And what was the other part of your question, Jennifer?
It was what rights were specifically granted? And then can the documentation be provided to Eagle and or just the watershed council?
When you ask what rights were granted, a quarter ownership of it was granted to each of the parcel owners in that development. Outside of that, I guess I don't understand what you mean. But yes, I can provide any, any information that I have. I would be glad to share.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Another person raised her hand for a question, Judy Burgoon. Judy Burgoon, I just unmuted your mic, so you should be able to unmute yourself on your end. Judy Burgoon, there you go.
Yes. When these slides were presented, they weren't visible to us. Did you share the screen with everybody?
Should be. Could you guys all see the slides, Joe and Brian?
Yeah, I could see that.
All we saw was Brian's name.
It might be a screen setting on your own machine. We could go back quickly and view that.
Okay, now it's showing.
You see it now? Okay, I'll just slip through them really quick here for, for you guys. So this is the first one, right? Brian Johnson, you're saying on the location.
Then the, yep, the project location, a little bit closer. And then the next one's just the survey that we've had done of the parcel. And the one after that would be the, an aerial view of the lot, the way it stands right now. And the next one's the layout of the docks. There should have been one more too, kind of showing a side view with the, you know, the, the taper and the rip rap and I don't know, maybe that one didn't make it to you.
Leaving that one out, just primarily going with the, the top view to keep it relatively simple. This is the overall proposed activity for everyone.
Sorry. Could you go back to the aerial view?
Did you have a question on this one?
I was just trying to get a better fix on exactly where this is in relation to the woods.
I'd say one more for back or I guess up.
This one?
Well, that one right there.
Yeah.
Okay. That's helpful.
Okay, does that address question? Okay, thank, thank you, ma'am. All right. One moment, please. All right. So looking at my question box here, it looks like someone's got a question. I think you answered this already in your presentation. It says, if only four owners, then why do you need five docks? Two docks would handle four boats for four owners. I'm not going to go back to the picture.
I have, I have two boats myself and a jet ski. And I don't use them both at the same time, but it would be nice to have them on the hoist there. And then I also, I know that two of the other owners both have two boats. So, you know, if, if we each had a dock and we could have two boats on the dock and possibly one jet ski next to it, it'd be more usable. That's, that was the reason. And the only reason, like I said, the fifth dock was there for, for if we have a guest, you know, I have a guest come for the weekend, they bring their boat. They might want a place to park it for the weekend. Really, that, that fifth dock could go away and we could use the boardwalk for that. I mean, if need be.
Okay, thanks. Looking at my attendees, Paul Michael has got a question. Paul Michael, I just unmuted your line. You should be able to unmute yourself and you can ask your question.
All right, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
You know, and Jennifer McKay asked a question about, about the lot itself. And I don't think this has been brought up. I mean, that is, that is Lot L. It's a, it's a plotted lot with deed restrictions. Okay, and, and one of the deed restrictions are, and I'm going to read it here. It says, buyer agrees that the use of this land is limited to single family residential purposes. And there are specifications about the, the building size and artesian wells to be capped and so on and so forth. But that particular lot is, is deed restricted for a single family home.
So Brian Marshall, do you want to address that in terms of the scope within this particular hearing and how that applies?
Yeah, so the primary scope of the project here is we're looking at the, the impacts that this project could have to the, the water body itself, the canal, the canal connecting with Burt Lake and then associated repairing rights to that aspect also. So kind of getting, talking about the different zoning aspects of it does start getting beyond the scope of the project and review at hand here.
Yeah, would that be something that would be covered more by local zoning officials, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So that's a local unit of government issue.
Yeah, so I think that's more where that question would be more, more applicable as opposed to this particular application hearing. I've got to move on now to our next person with a question. Hand raised Susan Sherveni. I got your name right. Susan Sherveni, you can go ahead.
My question is, when they cut all the trees down on this lot, it was, I would say semi heavily wooded. They had no curtains in place and when they started, we really didn't know what was happening over there. And my question is, what steps are being taken to preserve the integrity of the plant life and wildlife in the canal? That's my question. We have a lot of different kinds of fish, turtles, just all kinds of things, snails. And as homeowners along this canal, we've always tried to preserve the integrity of the canal. And, and I want to make sure that happens.
Yep, and that's all part of the scope of the review of the project is to, okay, what means, and I think it wasn't mentioned, but in addition to the proposed upland cut, they're proposing to slope the, the banks so that they're more stable and line those with like a geotextile fabric and place stone over top of them. So it does, like you mentioned, help protect the integrity of the project, of the, of the water body itself.
Just, just so we all know that we're not, when it comes to preserving the integrity of the water, it's not just Plymouth Beach Canal because this water will get out into the lake. So, so we know that and that will be preserved. The integrity.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And Brian, did you want to comment any more on, you know, in terms of, you know, Eagles review and how that's how we?
Yeah, and that's like, like I mentioned, that the primary review that we will look at the potential environmental impacts of this project, which would include some of the questions that you brought forward.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Next person to hand up is Alex Bauer. Alex Bauer, I just unmuted your line, so you should be able to ask your question. You can unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I had just sent you the same question in your Q and A, but so our canal maintenance, each lot owner pays by linear footage. And, you know, we have one family per lot. So Lot L is going to have all this activity, you know, if, if all this goes through, five boats, boat docks, ten boats, maybe more. And
And boats maybe more?
Well, you, you said two boats per docks. You have five docks. There's ten boats. Am I not seeing that correctly?
So
So as far as canal, canal maintenance, we pay by the foot. So each, you know, I have an eighty foot lot. I pay eighty dollars for that. So you're going to have four owners on Lot L with increased activity. You know, I have one boat. Most people have one boat, maybe a wave runner. That's a normal for the canal. So if we have, you know, all this activity down there and these four owners will only have to contribute the footage of Lot L, it just seems like it's unfair to me to, to have use of the canal and just contribute, you know, that, that amount for having up to ten boats.
So thanks for your question. Um, I think it'd be probably best if either Joe or Brian Marshall here explain exactly what we're trying, what we're looking to address here in this particular permit hearing as it relates to not addressing zoning issues or lot issues, but environmental impact issues. Could, could you guys just be clear on that? So, so I think we're getting a lot of questions related more towards zoning issues. And could you guys kind of clear that up for us?
Yeah, let me start, Brian. I think, so our review is we're reviewing the possible effects of this project on the waters here and the potential impacts on this, on this to the lake or the canal which connects to the lake. So there's, there's a public trust issue with the water. I thought I heard the words repair and rights. There's no repair and rights associated with a canal or any of the cuts in here. You don't, you don't build yourself repairing rights by connecting to Burt Lake. You've got to be a lakefront owner to, to have, be afforded repairing rights. But that's, that's less of an issue, I think, for the discussion. So uses for recreation, fish and wildlife local, we do consider local government regulations. So, you know, if the locals do have issues that can be considered in our permit review, commerce and industry, those sorts of things that aren't going to really pertain to a situation like this, but it's really strongly on the water quality and uses for fish and wildlife and recreational uses. I don't know if you want to add anything, Brian?
I think that covers it pretty well, like you said.
Yeah, so I guess to clear up my questions too about, and everybody, a lot of the questions come in. And so if someone has an issue related to zoning or something like that, that's something that if they make a comment during our hearing, does that affect the outcome of this? Or is that something that's overseen by a totally different government body?
Right, good, right. Good question, Jim, because the, the, we're, then, then it makes us aware of it, but we, we need to hear from the local government. The, the, a local unit of government who has authority over whatever particular issue is at hand. We need to hear them object or not object. If, if they stand, stand mute and it, and are silent, we would presume they have no objections. But if they have an issue, if, if, for example, the deed restriction issue is a problem for the local unit of government, if they provide us with a letter of objection and then it's up to them to work to resolve that. But we would, you know, certainly consider that during our project review and would try our best to hold the permit decision as long as we legally can to allow the locals to sort the issue out with the, with the project opponent.
Thanks, guys. I'm going to just get hit somebody's questions. We got a bunch of questions that came in through our question box here. One, one of them's related to, should it be approved? What would stop all the other residents in our association to obtain permits to provide multiple docks for residents and guests? How does Eagle handle, I mean?
Right, and that's one thing that is brought into consideration is the cumulative potential impacts of a project like this. So that is something that is looked into during the review process. And as you know, this is required a permit to, to do this type of activity. So it would be each person's due diligence to go through that process as we are tonight to obtain a permit to do such activities.
Right. Another person's asking, has this study been completed by Eagle or an environmental group on the impact to the, to the additional, to the addition of ten more boats within the canal?
That's a tricky issue. We don't, we, we don't do like a carrying capacity study for a canal or something like this. I mean, what's Burt Lake, like seventeen thousand acres? We, we just don't have, you know, you would have to have an immense impact to directly impact Burt Lake. This is a, an impact to this small canal. And we don't do that kind of a study. That's going to be something that, again, the locals are going to have to figure out a way to regulate. We, you know, our environmental assessment will consider adverse impacts to the public trust, repairing rights, which again, aren't, aren't an issue in the canal and the, and we, and the environment. So we, we are looking that, that the public trust impacts and impacts to the environment are minimized to the greatest extent possible. Beyond that, we would also be looking into feasible and prudent alternatives. What is, what could be considered a feasible and prudent alternative to accomplish the same goal here? That would minimize impacts. So those will be considered in our review. I, I think this, this project proposal meets the definition of a marina, which might, might kind of make you think of a commercial marina, but our definition, definition of a marina is very broad. And I could probably read it to you if I could find it real quickly, but it basically means providing a service to members of an association is considered a marina. And I think that's what we're going to end up with here is, is a marina review, which doesn't mean it's that much different than, than if it were, say, three docks being put out or a smaller cut. It just means that if they're, that the, the review is considered a marina and will incorporate a sort of a footprint plan as far as whatever might be permitted and they'll be allowed to arrange docks within that cut footprint. If, if it is in fact permitted. That's kind of generally in a little high level overview and it might kick off a whole bunch of more questions, but that's how we'll view it.
I'll just briefly add to it that I did myself go out there and evaluate the site. Kind of with these applications, the number of when we get kind of a snapshot view of the proposed activities, definitely do aerial reviews of what's been there historically and try and get a broader picture of what's occurred here over the years. But again, we're kind of giving a snapshot or a couple snapshot views when we do site, site visits and evaluations that way.
All right, thanks. You guys answered a couple of other questions that were in here too. Has Eagle analyzed the effect of the thirty by one sixty cutout of the existing canal, especially as related to dredging and as it relate, as related to dredging at the end of the canal?
Yeah, that's, I'll put again, the part of this review and as the process that we're working through right now is the public hearing is part of that process of gathering the information that's potentially not privy to us or the, or even the owner themselves to bring forth to review the project. And that's, we're going to be looking at what is that impact going to be to that body of water?
All right, I'm going to, time for a couple more questions before we have to move to the official hearing. So I want to get to a couple of people that haven't had a chance to ask a question yet. John Kaser. John Kaser, I'm going to unmute your line, so you should be able to unmute yourself and ask your question.
Thank you. My question is water quality. Canal is a rather stagnant body of water. The surface moves through the winds. You put ten boats or eight boats and a couple of You put ten boats or eight boats and a couple of water sleds down there. We're inducing, you know, exhaust and gas and oil waste. Um, have Eagle taken a look at the potential detriment of. That kind of pollution to our canal? That's it.
Okay, thanks, I'll let Brian Marshall address that. Thank you.
Yep, so you're talking about the overall kind of the the water quality aspects of the additional boats themselves that would create. Yep, so I think that's again, something that's uh really somewhat looked at, um, and is. As part of the review questions we're asked is the, will this meet water qual- quality standards? So again, I believe that would be wrapped up in part of the review of the application.
Yeah, so it'd be part of the actual review that you're going to be doing, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay, uh, next person, uh, Michael Tourist. Michael Tourist, you can um unmute your line if you'd like and ask your question. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Uh, again, this is Michael Tourist. I'm the director uh for the Department of Planning and Zoning for Sheboygan County. And I did pose a question, a written question. And I can't recall, perhaps it was Brian that essentially answered it. My question, my overarching question. Is does Eagle consider this a marina? And uh, in the county zoning ordinance, we do have marinas as. A listed use in this zoning district. We don't have a definition for a marina. But in talking to our legal counsel, what it boils down to from our perspective, from a permitting perspective is. If Eagle is going to consider this a marina, you know, even given their apparent broad. Uh, definition of such, that would trigger the need for the property owners. To submit a special use permit application. Special use permit application would be reviewed internally and then would be scheduled for public hearing. Uh, before the Sheboygan County Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, so I want to, uh, you know, establish that. It sounds like, again, I don't necessarily wanna. Um, paint anyone a corner, but it sounds like Eagle, given the scope of work here, is considering this a marina. And it's been uh my direction to, given that. Uh, require a special use permit, given the scope of work that uh is being proposed by Mr. Johnson here.
You want me to take that, Brian, since I I opened the Marina can of worms? I do, we do, I think, this does meet our def- definition of a marina in part three oh one. Um, and I can kind of paraphrase it. It's a facility um owned or operated by a person. That offers service to the public or members of the marina for docking, loading. Or other servicing of recreational watercraft. So it's a very broad definition. And a lot of people will always argue that we're not a commercial marina. We don't allow, you know, the public to come through. It doesn't need to be a commercial facility. It's, it's these offering services to members. So you've got an association here, I think this would meet the definition of a marina.
All right, thanks, and um, I know uh Michael, so you got some other questions that you did. Uh, submit into us to one being, you know, has a soil erosion and sedimentation pollution control permit? Application been submitted for review? Have you guys seen one of those for this project?
That would be all obtained at the county level um through the soil and sedimentation um under part ninety one.
It's not something you have seen, though.
Correct, I have not seen.
And and uh, you know, perhaps Mr. Johnson can elaborate as to, you know, with whom he had talked to at. Uh, the county department of planning and zoning, but I did not speak to Mr. Johnson. Perhaps he spoke to. Uh, one of my colleagues, but I have not spoken to him about this project, so um. It 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 sounds like that uh he and I need to have a discussion and soon regarding that tonight. But 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 before I forget, I'm wondering if now is a good time to pose the question uh regarding. Um, wh- what is the um? Time window for uh breaking ground, if you will, and completion for this project if it were to be approved?
All right, thanks, Mr. Tourist, and I'm I'm gonna mute your mic so we can go then to answer that question and have one more person ask their question, so um. Brian, you wanna? Take that, either you or Brian Johnson, what's the timeline?
I believe the initial initial timeline was to work on this uh project this fall. Um, as if things all went through initially, that's what was indicated in the application is accomplish it yet this fall. Um, but I'm not sure, I would assume probably throughout the, once it's permitted issue, it would be likely this spring. And Brian, definitely correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, that's exactly it. That's uh, we're just planning on by next summer to be able to have our boats in there. And not just tie them up to the shore, and I mean, if that's the goal.
Okay, thanks. Um, I want to let one more person with their hand up ask their question before we go to hearing. Cause we gotta get this moving, but I'm gonna let um Aaron Dubois. Um, you've had your hand up for a while. I'm gonna let you ask your question. Uh, Aaron?
Uh, yes, um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Um, so my name's Aaron Dubois. Um, we um do have a property in, you know, we have a a house up there um on Plymouth Beach in the association. Um, and I wanted to um understand if the applicant did get a permit to clear the lot. And actually remove that green belt. Um, we've talked a lot about that already, but I. I've not heard anything about the permit or removing, you know, clearing that lot and removing that green belt that. I thought was supposed to be by the waterways.
So under, under our state, the state statutes, we do not have one of those, so that's gonna make it outside the scope of the. Project and the what we're reviewing here today.
So no, there's no permit that had that would have had to been obtained from Eagle?
Correct.
Right, so not that you're aware of, okay.
All right.
Thank you. All right, guys, um, we've got several other questions that have come in. I'm gonna, what we're going to do is I'm gonna uh. Provide their question report to uh Joe and Brian here. Uh, so they can look over them, if you know, if they need to respond back or anything later, they they can do that. Um, but at this point, what we have to do is move on to the hearing part of our um of our meeting to today, so. I want to thank uh Brian Johnson for presenting and being available to answer questions from attendees here. Uh, so at this point, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna lower all our hands and we're gonna move on to the next part of the hearing. Of the meeting, which is the official official hearing, which I see a lot of you had what I may consider comments put in the question box, so. This is, at this point is where uh we'll actually take comments that'll be for the record, uh, that will be um responding to and addressing. Uh, in its application, so uh, Brian, uh, do you wanna go ahead and read the official hearing statement and? Get moving on with this next part of the night?
Yep, I believe that we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so again. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. Um, my name is Brian Marshall, the district representative for the Water Resource Division, Fire, My Creek, Lakes and Energy. Um, I will be serving as the hearing officer for the um public hearing for submission H N Z G. G six five V D R C B W. Um, with me tonight will be also being a hearing officer is Joseph Haas, the district supervisor. And I'm gonna briefly describe the, how we're gonna work through the public hearing. Background information like we've just done, then I'll describe the purpose of the hearing, which is to gather comments. Then outline the procedures under which we'll take the comments and then for af- after tonight's hearing. It'll then be time for you to provide your comments, and we've spent some majority of time tonight listening to your, to those comments. And at the end of the hearing, we'll provide a short closing statement. Uh, by way of background, the Water Resource Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs. That help protect inland lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes, and great lakes. The pro- the programs regulate certain activities such as dredging, draining, filling. Of an inland lake or stream, wetland, or constructing a dam, marina. Placing shore protection or constructing permanent docks and building indignated critical dunes, wetlands, or floodplains. While governing those responsibilities is the Natural Resource Environmental Protection Act of nineteen ninety four. P A four fifty one as amended act four fifty one. We are here tonight because Brian Johnson, Turkey Lee Creek Land Development LLC, has proposed the following activity. To excavate a one hundred and sixty foot wide by thirty foot deep or. Long boat well in the uplands of an existing canal of Burt Lake. The sites will be constructed. Um, with sloped and with the geotextile fiber fabric with eight to twelve inch angular stone placed over top of them. Till it erosion stabilized as a slopes. Additionally, it is proposed that to place five seasonal four foot wide docks. In a twelve foot seasonal dock on each side of the ho- of each side of seasonal docks. In order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice. Meeting certain criteria under part three oh one in the lakes and streams of act four fifty one. In general, we must consider the effect on the proposed project on the canal and Burt Lake. When reviewing the an application or permit under the provisions of part three oh one of four fifty one. Eagle make is charged to make following considerations as required by three oh one oh six of part three oh one. The department shall issue a permit if it finds the structure or project will not adversely affect the public trust or repairing rights. The department shall not grant a permit if the proposed project or structure would inawfully. Impair or destroy any waters or natural resources of the state. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give everyone interested in the proposed project submitted by Brian Johnson an opportunity. To provide information that Eagle can use in making the decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information provided that relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in making the it's a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support to the project, support or opposition to the project. And we'll simp, we'll happily make note of your position, but please understand the Eagle by law is not allowed to base our decision. On whether or not there is a widespread support or opposition for the project. Just a moment, I will outline. The procedures in which we will use taking your comments, but before I do so, I need to mention that the notice. Of this hearing was published in the Sheboygan Daily Tribune. On October twenty seventh, two thousand twenty. As we discussed at the beginning of the information session, if you have a comment to provide, click and hold your. Hand icon at the bottom of the screen, or if you're using a phone, type the star nine to raise your hand. To ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will use the following steps. First, applicant has already had an opportunity to describe the proposed project. Second, we will call those who have indicated they would like to speak in that general order received. If you have written comments or materials that you would like to present, please email them to me, upload them into my waters. Or send them to the Gaylor District Office via U S mail. When all comments have been completed, we'll ask if anyone else would like to speak. When your name is called. Your microphone microphone will be unmuted. As you begin to your comments, please state your name and any group or association that you represent. Each person will given be given a rough three minutes to make your comments, and I will indicate when we. You have approximately thirty seconds remaining and to begin to start wrapping up your comments. If needed, I will indicate the time has ended. I ask all to be courteous and respectful of one one another tonight. Only one person shall be speaking at a time. Please do not inter- interrupt the speaker. And please also recognize that Eagle staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for tho- for you to express your comments. On the provided project and to listen to those comments. This hearing is being recorded, and your comments will be part of the information Eagle will consider in making the decision of whether or not. To issue a permit on the proposed project. The public comment period for this hearing is open for ten days from the date of this hearing, ending on November fifteenth, twenty twenty. Additionally, information and comments submitted in writing during the ten day public comment period will also be considered in Eagle's decision. Additional information and comments may be submitted to uh myself, Brian Marshall, to the Gaylor District Office at twenty one hundred. West M thirty two, Gaylor, Michigan, four nine seven three five. Following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will make a decision whether to issue a permit for the project. As proposed, or with modifications, or send a denial letter. You may find out the decision by checking Eagle's My Waters webpage and search and searching for permit submission number. H N Z G six five V D R C B W. Thank you for your attention. Jim will now be calling the names of those whoever indicated they would like to make a statement.
All right, thanks, Brian. So that's the official statement. Uh, just to remind people. Um, I'll be taking comments now. You each got about three, three minutes to make your comment. Um, Brian, I don't think we talked about this, but um I can keep track of time if you'd like, and um. I'll let, I'll let you know, um, if if when you make your comment tonight, uh when you have about a minute left, I'll break in and I'll let you know you have a minute left. So so you so you know that. Uh, when people, some of you pre-registered to attend this hearing and when you did that. You had, you were able to indicate whether or not you make you made a co- you would like to make a comment. I've got a couple people down here that already said they wanted to do that, and so we'll call you you up first to make your comment. Um, after that, if you want to make comment, you'll just raise your hand, and I will call on you and mute your line. And um. If you're on the phone, and now we've got a couple people that are on the phone, if you'd like to make a comment and you're on the phone, you hit star nine. Like Brian said, and we will call you up by your phone number, cause I can't see your name. So we call it that way, and um, Joe and Brian are gonna be listening in. We're not gonna be commenting or answering any questions you might. Um, have, we're just listening to your comment, just to just to let you know. All right, so with that, um, I'm gonna call up our first person that indicated they wanted to make a comment um earlier. And that was Jennifer McKay. So Jennifer McKay, I'm gonna see if I can find your line here, and I will unmute you, so. Uh, Jennifer McKay, again, please state the association you're with, and you'll have three minutes.
Great, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Um, thank you for holding the hearing this evening, um, and a special thank you to Brian Johnson for being here to answer questions. It is greatly appreciated. My name is Jennifer McKay. I'm the policy director at Tippinamit Watershed Council. Uh, after reviewing the permit application, the Watershed Council recommends denial of the permit because of the disruption to the aquatic resources is unacceptable. Feasible and prudent alternatives exist, and the proposed project is in violation of the local zoning ordinance. To highlight some of our primary concerns, the impact to the public trust and environment is unacceptable. Excavation and dredging of the boat basin can change the properties of the waters in ways that directly impact fisheries, such as decreasing clarity. And increasing sedimentation in the near term and altering the landscapes where fish live and spawn in the long term. The boat basin will require maintenance dredging, which diserves ecosystems by removing and killing critical organisms that play an important role. At the base of the aquatic food chains, and changes in those populations can have cascading impacts throughout the aquatic ecosystem. The boat basin can have cumulative impacts. If authorized, other property owners along the channel and along Burt Lake can follow suit. Currently, the majority of properties along the channel rely on traditional dockage. However, if the boat basin is proved, other property owners could choose to pursue private boat basins as well. And Eagle will not have um a reason to deny those applications. The weed mat that was proposed could prevent growth of all aquatic plants. Aquatic plants provide essential fish and wildlife habitat and help keep our waters clean and healthy. Aquatic vegetation produces oxygen for our waters and provides food, shelter, and nesting areas for fish and vertebrates and wildlife. The project purpose is too narrowly defined to limit a complete alternatives analysis. In addition. In addition, the proposed project is to occur at the end of the canal. Therefore, installation of seasonal dockage would not prove to be an inconvenience to the other property owners within the canal. Seasonal dockage will have significantly less impact upon the environment and public trust than, than, than the proposed project. Therefore, dockage is a feasible and prudent alternative that need to be, that needs to be pursued. The proposed project is otherwise unlawful and is in violation of the Sheboygan County Zone Ordinance. Per the ordinance, the land providing the shared waterfront access shall be no less than twenty two thousand five hundred square feet in area. And Brian Johnson mentioned the lot was only six thousand feet, square feet. Um, in addition, no more than one dock shall be permitted on the land providing the shared waterfront access. As well, no more than one watercraft slip, mooring, boat horse, or other means of non-temporary anchorage shall be permitted. We will provide written comments that will elaborate on all these points further. Again, we urge Eagle to give careful consideration to the comments provided and deny the permit application as proposed. The other option is for the applicant to withdraw the permit application and make modifications. Should this be done, the modified permit application should also go out for public notice to allow the public to have the opportunity to review and comment on the modified project. On behalf of the board, staff, and members of Tippinamit Watershed Council, thank you again for the opportunity to share these comments with you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to move to the next person. Uh, Judy Burgoon indicated she wanted to make comment ahead of time. So Judy Burgoon, I'm unmuting your line. Judy Burgoon, can you uh, see where you can unmute your line there, hopefully? Okay, so um, I'm not, I don't know if you're able to unmute your line there or not, Ms. Burgoon, but I'll come back to you um, again in a minute. So I just want to remind people that when I unmute your line, you'll see something pop up on your screen. Then I'll allow you to unmute your microphone, or you'll build a microphone icon on your screen that you can just click unmute. So we'll come back to Ms. Burgoon. Uh, now I'm looking at people who have their hands raised. So again, if you'd like to make a comment, I'm like, I'm gonna see her. There you go. So if you'd like to make a comment, there we go, got that. Uh, just click your raised hand icon and I'll call on you, or if you're on the phone, click star nine and I'll call on you that way too. So first person with their hand up to make their comment is Paul Michael. So uh, Paul Michael, I am, I am unmuting your line. So you should be able to make your comment. Remember to state any association you're with, and you have three minutes.
Okay, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Paul Michael. I am the President of the Plymouth Beach Association, which we definitely have a vested interest in this. And you know, there's a number of reasons that we, we, we object. And you know, I mean, un, unfortunately, a lot of them don't, you, you know, don't fall within the range you're looking at. I mean, number one is our property values. With having a mini marita, which is actually going to be kitty cornered across from me. Uh, the increased noise pollution being caused by, by this lots. I mean, this is, we are in a subdivision. Uh, myself and the neighbors, and, and my neighbors directly across from the site are full-time uh, permanent residents. Um, you know, what do I state that the canal is sixty feet wide? And it does, you know, we do have to do a lot of maintenance on it, especially at, at the mouth in the river. Uh, the, one of the things that, that also bothers me is these, the proposed project has the boats coming perpendicular to the canal. Whereas the majority of the boats in the canal are, are docked parallels to the canal. Now, as I stated, the canal is only sixty feet wide. So as these boats came, coming back out of their boat slips and turn around, you know, and go to turn it forward, a lot of people have a tendency to give a excessive throttle, causing a prop wash. Now, this prop wash would sit there and would come up against the property owners on the west side of the canal, which would basically make their properties, if there's enough of it, unusable. And uh, I think that's pretty much, that's pretty much what I wanted to state.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your comment. Moving on to our next person for their comment is uh, Susan Shervenny. Susan Shervenny, you should be able to unmute your line. And again, you can repeat your name, please. And um, go ahead.
This is Michael, her husband.
Okay, can, can you please say your name then and uh, any association you want? Thank you.
I have, yeah, I have her lower half, but uh, better half, I would say. No. But uh, I live on the canal. I am the uh, director, or Director of Burt Lake Preservation. I also am the Chairman of the Tusker Township Planning Commission, and I've been working closely with Michael Thurston. He eloquently uh, stated the position that I was going to say, and so did Jennifer from the tip of the mitt. But the bottom line is that uh, this is considered a marina unless you're three hundred and fifty feet uh, a property, and that's what Michael has told me, tourist. So um, if I remember, Mr. Haas said the fact that you had taken consideration any county zoning uh, ordinances, and this is considered a a residential area, not a commercial area. So if you want to put more than four boat slips in, or whatever it allows, then you're considered a commercial piece of property in the eyes of the county. So um, I would hope, I know Mike is, uh, tourist has said that he has not heard from Mr. Johnson or Mr. Adams, who supposedly either one of them owned this property. We're not sure who's all involved, but uh, they need to make sure that they talk to the county. Because uh, if they start this project without partner, county approval, uh, they may run into surreal problems. So uh, hopefully the uh, Eagle will take in consideration the county ordinances and the zoning ordinances for the lakes and streams also that Jennifer McKay eloquently discussed and Mike tourist brought up too. That uh, you know, these things need to be looked at too, before the uh, Eagle starts letting them dredge into our canal. I mean, we've all been here for quite a few years. I live here full-time. And it's been a great area. People all get along and we, we respect each other's boating rights and everything. But since this uh, lot was approved by the county, which they can, you can zone, you, you can zone uh, you know, four lots and a two hundred and fifty foot lot. That's not the problem. But the problem is that uh, the confusion and the chaos that would cause based on what we've seen so far. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you, sir. And can, can you repeat your name again, just so we have it for record?
Yeah, it's, it's Michael Shervenny.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, next person with their hand up is William Mapes. William Mapes, again, repeat your name and uh, any association you're with?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, this is William Mapes. I'm, I own one quarter interest in Lot L, Turkey Creek. Uh, first of all, just let me say that as far as zoning issues and things like that, uh, been very fortunate to have Brian handling most of those issues. I personally would admit, you know, quite a bit of ignorance in the zoning issue. Um, I just wanted to make a couple of comments about the impact, environmental impact that uh, our project may have on the lot. I heard some mentioning of aquatic uh, life, aquatic vegetation, and some other things. And I honestly think that what we're going to do will not have a negative impact on the environment, but possibly a positive impact on the environment. And um, because the canal has no flow of water about it whatsoever, and it's sitting stagnant water, I don't believe that the project proposal that we're doing will have any negative impact uh, as far as erosion or any of those other things. I also would like to make the comment that, you know, the, people are talking about the green belt along the front of the property that we had removed. You know, when these people build their houses on their lot, if you look at them, obviously, the green belt has been removed on every piece of property that's been uh, you know, developed. So um, you know, I just want you to take that into consideration that, you know, once properties are developed, of course, the green belt leaves the front of the canal. I've heard some environmental issues too, where people are worried about the amount of boats or uh, you know, prop wash from bro, boats causing erosion. Well, it is a public waterway. And if a guy wants to come down in there and fish in his little boat and spin circles all day long with his motor on, they have the right to do it. Um, you know, I'll get to saying also that, you know, I, people have these concerns about a marina, and maybe it does fall into the uh, you know, the zoning of a marina. But we're not planning on using it as a marina. We're, you know, we, they talk about family residences. Um, as far as I'm concerned, I am just trying to have a family residence there. I have a young daughter. And I, I plan on being very quiet and just trying to live a simple, quiet life there and go fishing. What we're really just trying to do is actually increase property value. I've heard people talk about the decrease in property value. I, I don't see how there's going to be any de, decrease in property value when we're going to drastically increase the property value of Lot L.
You have about a minute?
Okay, so um, I, you know, that's pretty much good enough for now. I appreciate the time and I appreciate everyone with their comments and uh, thank you all for attending.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, move to our next person with their hand up. Um, it's uh, Erin Dubois. Got your name right this time, hopefully. Erin Dubois.
Oh, yes, thank you. Um, and I am a, um, Erin Dubois. I'm a property owner. Um, we have a seasonal property up there. And um, in, I am, you know, of course, part of the Plymouth Beach Association, because we pay dues and we live within the association. Um, I am not any kind of um, officer or anything like that for the association though. Um, and a lot of my comments too, um, and I should have been a little bit clearer on that. From my understanding, the Sheboygan County zoning ordinance, which is Article ten under Lakes and Streams Protection, does talk about the green belt. And so I, you know, obviously, we have a, a residential house there. And we do have, um, we do have trees and there's um, obviously grass and, you know, in, by our uh, by, by our property. But regardless, um, you know, my concern, and I raised it earlier on a few of the questions, you know, if, if this were to be approved, you know, what, what um, the adverse impact would be for all residents, you know, within Plymouth Beach in the canal, they could, all of us could, you know, go ahead and put in, you know, get permits to put in a, a, a lot of boat docks. Um, whether it's for our guests or for our owners, you know, that would be um, probably up to interpretation. But you know, this to me is definitely, to me and my husband, um, we have viewed this as a um, what I consider if you putting ten boat slips on a residential lot, that considers a marina type of, of activity. And that should be viewed as such. And I also think it might be um, considered into funneling. You know, when you take a residential property and make it um, with this many boat slips. Um, at one point, I heard there might be some transient slips. I'm not really sure, but it looks like the permit is only for ten um, boat slips, which is five docks as presented. Um, so you know, I have a lot of concern with that. Um, you know, I'm probably not very advert, or very um, uh, have the understanding of what it would impact um, with noise pollution and water pollution of that many more boats. I, I can't really talk to that part of it, other than, you know, there's a lot, you know, all of us could a, also do this and make it, you know, and make a very big impact into our um, our canal there.
You have one minute?
Um, okay, one minute. So the other um, is the nuisance violations. I think that needs to be considered. Um, the, I have not, you know, I don't know exactly all the violations, but there was a picture um, I, that I sent. Um, when we were up over Labor Day weekend, there was a middle finger uh, wood sign posted on Turkey Creek. Um, and that's just inappropriate when you have families in there. I, I just think that's uh, rude and uh, very just, just, distasteful. Um, and, but I do think we need to consider this a marina. And I, I do think it would be, you know, very much a zoning um, ordinance violation. So thank you for your time, and I do appreciate you allowing us to do this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to now uh, call Judy Burgoon. I had you earlier. Uh, it looks like your mics are muted. Ju, Ju, Judy, are you there?
Yes, I'm Judy Burgoon. I am one of the owners of property on Plymouth Beach. Not an officer of the association. Uh, I would like to object to this uh, proposal on three grounds. First, uh, the fact that this meets the definition of a marina is completely contrary to the definition by zoning of a single-family residence. The reason to have these uh, zoned as single-family residents is to control the amount of activity and traffic and uh, noise and what have you as a residential area. This would violate that sense of it being a residential area. Uh, secondly, I am concerned about the impact on the wildlife, the aquatic life. Uh, this has been an area that is a, a quiet and lovely area, or has been in the past. And increasing the amount of traffic regardless is going to adversely impact the wildlife. Uh, third, the amount of sheer traffic on Plymouth Beach Road, the canal itself, into the lake. People may have wonderful, good intentions about living quietly. But once this is approved, it is de facto now a marina. And it allows for an increase in activity uh, tenfold. And certainly uh, also opens up the door for other property owners to do the same. Our Plymouth Beach Association has uh, been objecting routinely to taking single-family residents and turn them into rental properties. This is the same concept. Uh, it is within the purview of the owners to say these should be single-family residences, and this does not meet that definition. So thank you very much for the time.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. I just want to remind people, if you have a comment, you can click your raised hand icon. And um, we'll call on you to make your comment. Uh, I also have up on the screen right now, other ways to submit your comments. So tonight's not the only time. If you want to submit a comment a different way, uh, you can send it in writing. You can enter your comment via My Waters and system, or you can send an email to Brian as well. All right, so next person with their hand up is Paul Michael. Uh, Paul Michael, I just unmuted your line. You should be able to unmute. Go ahead.
Yes, Paul Michael here once again. Once again, I'm the President of the Plymouth Beach Association. Uh, I did hear a comment about, you know, a gentleman saying that, you know, he, he wanted to live, you know, in quiet, in a quiet neighborhood. Uh, I would like to bring up the fact that I'm, I'm not directly across, but kitty corner across from this lot. And since the, you know, since this lot has been cleared, taken over, formed into their association, I mean, we have had nothing but, but noise and, I mean, dirt bikes running from day, you know, in the spring from night to day. It's all we heard. Uh, right now, if I look across the canal, there was a junk boat that was put right up against the, you know, as close to the, as close to the canal as you could get on, on the high end before it starts to taper. Uh, it was thrown up with a huge Trump fan, which are from uh, twenty twenty sign. That part I don't object to, but on the bottom of it, it says F your feelings. Unfortunately, this is not coming in a neighborhood and being a good neighborhood and, you know, going to have a, a quiet, you know, coming in to be a quiet neighborhood, which we are. So I hope this is all taken into consideration. Because like I said, you know, they talked about, it was talked about increasing their va, their property value. Yeah, you know, Yeah, it'll probably increase the property values of the four outlots, the Lot L, that don't part of it, but it's sure not going to do anything for the rest of us that live across from it. It is going to decrease our property values. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, next person with her hand up is Brian Johnson. So Brian Johnson, I'm unmuting your line. You can go ahead.
Yeah, I just want, yeah, I just want to comment a couple of things. The, all the Plymouth Beach lots in that subdivision, they're, most of them are eighty-foot lots. They have two boats each, or they could have two boats and a jet ski. Someone said, and I don't remember who said that they're, most of the boats are parked parallel. There is a bunch of boat wells down that canal, so they're not all parked parallel. So if they're existing eighty-foot lots and they have two boats each, they're allowed, and we're two-hundred-and-fifty-foot, you divide that out, that's three of those eighty-foot lots there. So realistically, six or more boats wouldn't be any different than what their eighty-foot lots are already demanding of that canal. So there wouldn't be any increase in traffic because right now, we could use that canal lot and we can park our boats parallel. We can anchor them, et cetera. We can use it. So, and we're going to. It's not going to change the activity. If, if we want eight boats down there, we're going to have eight boats down there. Is it going to be inconvenient? Yeah, we're not going to just leave the lot go and not use it. So regardless, it will not increase any traffic. It's going to be the same number of boats. It's going to make it more accommodating for the other people across the canal when they want to move their boats around. If we have a boat well cut in, I don't want to spend the thousands of dollars to do it. But if it's going to make it nicer and more accommodating, that's what we're going for. There's some possible other options that we could throw out there. I have a couple of other plans that I'm going to submit to Eagle. There's, there's other options where I could, I could divide those lots and meet the zoning ordinance. And then if there's only two owners per lot, that changes the restrictions for residential use rather than multiple owners on a shared lot. So we could, we could do something different. But bottom line, the existing lot is two-hundred-and-fifty feet, and we're going to use it for boats, period.
You have about one minute?
All right, so I just want to comment that. That's it. Thank you, everyone, for, for attending. It's nice to hear everyone's comments. Again, if anyone has any questions, they can call me direct. Everyone has my email, my phone number, I'm sure, in that association with the information that went out. So if anyone wants to chat, feel free to call me. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, next person, the hand raised is Paul Coleman. Paul Coleman, you can go ahead and unmute your line.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead and I repeat your name and any association.
Yeah, my name is Paul Coleman. I have, I don't have any association or any associations other than being members of the local Plymouth Beach Association, et cetera, and a concerned environmentalist. But it appears to be, what, what I'm concerned about is from an Eagle standpoint is that there appears to be a significant deviation on a percentage basis of the amount of cutout compared on, of the, of the waterfront length on the canal compared to the rest of the properties on the canal. This, the hundred-and-sixty foot they're talking about is a minimum of sixty-four percent compared to what is the majority of the other properties on the canal. If, as a precedent, everybody took sixty-four percent of their property and cut it out, I think that would, I don't think we know, anybody knows. I don't think Eagle knows. I don't think anyone knows what kind of environmental difference that would make. What I'm concerned about, therefore, is the precedent that you may be setting by permitting this percentage of the waterfront of the property being cut out into a, into a brand-new canal or brand-new, excuse me, docking space. That's my point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, at this point, I'm looking to see if anybody else, their hands raised. I do not see any other hands raised. Remind you, if you're on the phone and you'd like to make a comment, hit star nine, and you can indicate you want to make comment that way. Give it another second or two, just to see if anybody else would like to make a comment. I want to remind you, up on the screen are other ways to submit your comment. If you do not want to make it tonight, it's not too late. You can submit it that way as well. Okay, I'm not seeing any other comments. Brian Marshall, I'm going to turn it over to you, and I'm going to allow you to guess, read the closing statements then.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you, everyone, for your comments and cooperation tonight. It's greatly appreciated. Appreciate the interest in the proposed project and that you took the time out tonight to be here and provide those. As you indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you may submit additional comment, written comments until November fifteenth. Following the close of the public comment period, we will consider all comments received and make a decision on the proposed project. Just to remind those that may still want to submit a comment, comments may be submitted via My Waters, email, or US Mail. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again.
All right, thank you, Brian. That's the official hearing is closed. So what I have up here is the deadline for public comments, right? It's the number fifteenth. I think, Brian, I, I will give you everybody's email that signed up today. So if you want to follow up right after the meeting, you can, and let them, give them the direct, the direct link, I guess, to the My Waters page and a couple of other things, just to remind people about where to go for comments, like we usually do. Again, there's Brian's contact information, so if you want to email him directly or give him a call, you can regarding this, this project. And with that, Joe or Brian, do either of you have any party comments, I guess?
I would, I'd just like to say thanks again to everybody for taking the time out of your evening and, and commenting and participating. It provides us with firsthand information that we don't receive otherwise, right? That's the purpose of these hearings is to get, hearings are to get, to get comments from those that are out in the resource and using, using the resource and that understand the exact setting and what potential impacts may or may not be there. So again, just appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, like Joe said, for taking your time out tonight to listen in and, and comment. I appreciate those. Hopefully, you all have a great rest of your evening. Thank you for joining us.